Good evening. Per the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are being audio and video recorded this evening. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for 60 River Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue the public hearing for 60 River Road to January 3rd at 7:45 for a variance request for 60 River Road. 7:45 PM.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The second item on the agenda this evening is the Preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Commons. We're going to start the evening off with our attorney, Dan Hill, giving a summary of some of the recent activity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed as to what's happened between the last hearing and this hearing, and to also give the folks in the audience an update and what we expect to happen tonight. So, taking a step back, as you all know, the purpose of the public hearing is for the board to collect evidence, to collect data, testimony, that will form its statutory role as the decision-maker of this application. So, this board sits as the adjudicator of an application for a 40B permit, and under the statute, the board has to balance local concerns against the need for affordable housing. Those local concerns can be anything, basically, that's regulated by the town currently. So, it can include earth removal, it can include public safety, anything that we find in our planning board's regs, anything that we find in our zoning bylaws and other municipal bylaws. So, what this board has been doing over the last four or five months is taking in evidence, taking comments from town officials, from interested parties, neighbors, and from its peer reviewers on these critical local concern issues. And we know that there are still substantial local concerns with this application. So, the board, at some point, has to decide, do we have enough information to make a decision? And that is the point where the board closes the hearing. The purpose -- so, this past Monday, we had a staff meeting here, or actually a town hall, and we met with, we invited the applicant to attend that staff meeting. It was myself, it was Sean Riordan, and the town planner, and Chris sat in on it as well. And then we had the applicant and his attorney, and his engineer. And the purpose of that staff meeting was for us to advise the applicant what we thought were the outstanding issues, the outstanding concerns that we have with this project, and to receive their feedback as to how they anticipate responding to those issues, and attempt to make the future public hearings as efficient as possible, since we really are, we're under a deadline of six months, and we need to be as efficient as possible in these hearings. So, that meeting was productive. Tonight, you're going to hear updates from the applicant, and from Sean Riordan, and from Bill McGrath, on where we are on several of these local concern issues. And we're going to lay out a roadmap for how this process should proceed going forward. There's still some remaining issues to discuss and to review. So, that's where we are. We had a productive meeting on Monday. It's important to understand, just for everybody in the audience, that no decisions were made at this meeting. It was merely an opportunity for us to convey to the applicant the problems and concerns that the town has, and the zoning board has, and for us to understand from the applicant what their objectives are for addressing those issues. So, that's where we are today. Tonight, we're going to hear from the applicant on several of the important, an update on several of these issues. The most important part of tonight's agenda is going to be the construction management plan, which we asked the applicant to provide at the last hearing. It's been provided, it's been reviewed by Sean, and so, the applicant will address it, will explain it, Sean will address it, and give us his feedback, and further action items, because it's not, it's not complete. There's still some additional work to do. So, I think at this point, it would make sense for the applicant to summarize where they are on these issues, and then we'll go forward with Sean's report.
Mr. Chairman, for the -- Is it not working? Switch, is the switch on there?
Yeah, the switch on top.
No, it's working, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Smolak, attorney for both applicants, Abbeville Development LLC and Abbeville Residential LLC. As had been indicated by Attorney Hill, we want to update the board on matters that have occurred and submittals that have been made since the last board hearing back on November 21st, and then get into a little more in terms of details, or an update in terms of stormwater management, and then also have a further discussion of the construction management plan that has been prepared, submitted to the board. First of all, since our last hearing on November 21st, we, actually at the hearing on the 21st, we committed to making a number of filings with the board by certain timeframes. And so, what we have done is we've submitted revised drainage design plans, we've submitted a, design plans for the Lawrence Street Bridge and Causeway as part of the town's work related to the MassWorks grant. We've also submitted the, what is called a consolidated construction and operation management plan, and also, we've submitted a hydrogeologic evaluation report, which I'll touch upon shortly. And then, lastly, we submitted a letter to the board dated December 19th, which basically summarized in a little more detail as to the items that we had submitted, and the feedback and the follow-up on the same. So, in terms of the hydrogeologic evaluation report, as noted at the board's last hearing, the applicant had submitted a proposed scope of work which, to the MassDEP, which was reviewed and approved by the MassDEP for this hydrogeologic study. And that hydrogeologic study is a necessary requirement with respect to the receipt of a MassDEP groundwater discharge permit related to a package wastewater treatment plant. So, the report, which is approximately 178 pages in length, was submitted and filed with the MassDEP back on December 15th, and on that same day, the report was also submitted to the board and the board's peer review consultant, and, which is Horsey &amp; Wooden. And although the report relates to a state DEP permitting matter, we expect the board will receive peer review comments from Horsey &amp; Wooden in the coming weeks. So, another item is the MassDEP audit letter. The MassDEP conducted an audit of the environmental work that was performed by the current owner back in 2001, or concluded back in 2001. The filings at that time were prepared by Camp Dresser McKee, which is now known as CDM Smith, again, for the current site owner, Buckley &amp; Mann. In turn, Buckley &amp; Mann received a November 17th letter from MassDEP, which letter was identified as a notice of audit findings and notice of noncompliance from the audit section chief from the DEP's waste site cleanup division for the Southeast Regional Office. The audit letter was issued, that was issued to identify two deficiencies, one of which, actually, both deficiencies are required to be responded to within 180 days of the date of the letter. The first item that would need to be corrected was related to certain language and legal deficiencies related to the activity and use limitation that was issued and actually recorded. And those items will be corrected in due course, related to just documented proper authority, and also documenting the fact that residential use is prohibited within that AOL area. And the second item of the audit letter that was identified as a deficiency was that the fact that there wasn't a stage-one environmental screening for the site was not conducted, and that screening is designed to confirm there's no risk to site habitat within the area of the AOL. And as noted in the peer review letter that was submitted by the Beta Group, that was dated December 18th, these items are mostly procedural issues that could be handled relatively easily, in our opinion. And we've submitted a scope of work that was prepared by IC Environmental Management. That scope of work is designed to respond to the items that were noted, identified in the audit letter, and it's our understanding that the board's peer review engineers or consultants will examine that scope of work to ensure that it's consistent with what would be required to be completed, noted to correct those identified deficiencies. And like the MassDEP groundwater discharge permit, this is a state permitting issue. Nonetheless, we certainly will take this work very seriously, complete it in accordance with the requirements of the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, or MCP, governing this matter. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is turn the discussion over to Rick Goodrow, who will update you on stormwater. And after that, Tom will, Tom DePlacido will follow and walk you through items related to the, an update in terms of the unit count of the project, and how that's been adjusted, and also talk about project offsite improvements, and the responsibility for those improvements, and also, and to discuss a bit about the construction management plan and walk you through it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Rick Goodrow with United Consultants. Amy, could you put the stormwater plan up on the screen, please?
The illustration plan?
Yes. So, what I wanted to do is go through a little bit of the background of the stormwater system for the project, and then finish with where we, where we are now with the stormwater system. So, the project designs have included a stormwater system for the capturing, conveying, and treating of the state stormwater. These designs were reviewed by the town's peer review consultants as this process has progressed, and they were in compliance, found to be in compliance with the Town of Norfolk and the Massachusetts DEP stormwater regulations. The peer review consultant had provided the board with written correspondence to that point on November 20th, 2017, indicating that the systems, stormwater systems complied with the town and DEP standards. Since that time, we have completed revisions as the project has progressed. These revisions included the redesign of the roadway systems, the roadway right-of-way widths, and the pavement widths for the system, and the elimination of some of the cul-de-sacs within the original proposal. Additionally, the site grading was revised. These revisions were presented to the board at the November 21st public hearing. The applicant has also revised some of the proposed houses, and the lot layouts have been revised, which resulted in the current proposal of 148 single-family house lots. We utilized the above-mentioned revisions to complete the current analysis, which was for three watersheds that exist on the site. One located here to the front, which drains the infiltration basin one in the darker blue. Middle portion of the site drains the infiltration basin two, towards the northeast corner of the site, and then the rear portion drains the infiltration basin three. What we found when we analyzed the revisions to the plan is that the three watershed areas have been reduced in size, and that the impervious area has also been reduced. These results were provided to the board and their peer review consultants, and I anticipate that the board has received the peer review consultants, and I would request that Mr. McGrath have an opportunity to discuss, pay his reviews and findings for the stormwater system. I would also like to add that when the construction phasing, which you're going to see a plan of later and will be discussed by Mr. DePlacido, when that was put together, we, we had infiltration basin one being constructed as part of phase one, and infiltration basin two being constructed as part of phase two, so that when those construction areas were under construction, those basins would be available for the stormwater flows. And we also had infiltration basin three as part of phase four's construction, and like, that will also likely handle the stormwater flow for phases four and five of the development. Thank you.
Bill, would you please respond and report to the board on your findings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was mentioned, we did go through a pretty extensive peer review process on the stormwater management design. There were several iterations back and forth. As of the last meeting on November 21st, we felt that the design could meet all of the state's stormwater management policy requirements, as well as the town requirements. There's been some changes to the design since then. We didn't ask the applicant to submit a complete new stormwater report, because much of the information will be the same. We did ask them to examine the watersheds that drain to the infiltration basins, which they did. They submitted a revised watershed plan, as well as a memo outlining changes to the areas in the watersheds, as well as the impervious area within each one of the watersheds. We reviewed those, we provided a letter to the board dated December 19th. We feel those are adequate. We think at this point, the stormwater management design is complete. It still has to be finalized as part of the final construction plans, which should be reviewed as well, but we don't think there's any, any further peer review needed for the design at this point.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that we discussed at the staff meeting on Monday was balancing the need for us to have a comprehensive comfort level with this drainage design of the project against the reality that the plans are not final, really, until after the permit's been issued, changes are made based upon conditions of the permit. And so, what we typically do in other towns and other 40B contexts is that we accept a preliminary plan for review during the public hearing to prove that the project is feasible, achievable, that, that compliance with the state stormwater standards is 10 standards, that compliance with those standards is achievable at, at this stage with this presentation of evidence, but that we realize that there will be changes to the project, there'll be further refinements to the drainage design, and that the best way to handle that is to put a condition in the permit that requires the board to pass off, pass off on a final design, having, requiring the applicant to essentially submit final, fully engineered drawings to the board before the issuance of any building permits, and getting the zoning board to approve those plans. And if there's any concerns with that final design, the board would convey those concerns and continue to work with the applicant until those are addressed. So, we discussed that at the staff meeting. The applicant indicated that they were okay with, with that framework that we've, and we've used this in other towns. So, that's how we're going to handle this. It's a little bit different from the Rockwood application, where those plans came to us pretty much fully engineered, and so, our post-permit condition in the Rockwood permit did not provide for this kind of review, but this will. So, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Dan. Amy, is, when will Bill's report be available for everyone to see on the town website? Will that be posted soon?
Sure, I can put that up tomorrow.
You can put that up tomorrow, okay.
We just got it.
Okay, so that'll be posted tomorrow? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along, Mr. DePlacido?
Amy, could we put up Appendix 2.2?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name's Thomas DePlacido Jr., I'm the developer of Abbeville Residential LLC and Abbeville Development LLC. And is it possible just to blow that up just a little bit? Just to, might help out if this part, just expand it? If not, not a problem. Basically, I just wanted to update the board first, first off here, on the unit count, where we are with lots, and what's happening with this. Thank you. Like Rick had mentioned earlier, there's 148 single-family homes now. That's what was originally proposed. We've dropped that back 20 houses from where we were a month or so ago. Those 148 single-family homes are exactly what was originally proposed, which is 32 two-bedroom homes, 63 bedroom homes, and 56 four-bedroom homes. Also, as part of that, we were asked to eliminate the duplex units and try to create more space in between the individual houses, more flexibility with housing designs that we're working on to give the whole neighborhood a better appeal and look with that. As far as the rental homes goes, there's 56 rental homes that are proposed, that was 48, so there was eight added to that. There's 12 one-bedroom homes, 36 two-bedroom homes, and eight three-bedroom homes. And those rental units will actually be proposed in this area, in here, right in there. What that does for the town with the additional rental units is that between both Abbeville Commons and the Preserve at Abbeville, it actually adds 93 units of affordable housing to the Town of Norfolk's housing stock. So, that, those would all be counted towards affordable houses with that. While we're on this plan, what I'd like to talk about next here is some of the improvements on Lawrence Street. Basically, there's two separate projects that we have on Lawrence Street. One in this area, which is the Town of Norfolk, and I was asked to briefly go over that tonight, even though that is the Town of Norfolk's project with the MassWorks grant on it. As being the developer, part of our contribution to this grant is actually providing, or paying for the engineering. The engineers are working for the Town of Norfolk, though, with this. In that area, as I had pointed there, where it's sort of a darker green on that, basically, you have the reconstruction of the bridge and the causeway, the proposed widening of the causeway and the bridge to 24 feet in width is what's being proposed, sidewalks and cantilevered boardwalk through the causeway, water main installation going through there, drainage and stormwater installation, which will improve the quality of the runoff, instead of just when the town salts or sands that road, or dirt and debris, actually goes into the wetlands and actually be treated, go through a stormwater or catch basin and pre-settlement forbays to actually remove that from going into the ponds, which would be, which would be a big improvement. Amy, could you actually go to that cross-section that we have provided? Might be Lawrence Street improvement.
Say Lawrence Street on it? I'm not sure that I have that.
I sent it on my last email to you.
Yeah. I don't know whether to say it did.
Okay. What it basically was, the cross-section.
There's a G.
Yep, that's it. Okay. That's tough to read on things, but basically, it shows right there, that's actually Lawrence Street, and it actually shows a 24-foot travelway, actually pavement width, 10-foot travel lane either side, two-foot shoulder, two-foot shoulder. On this side, there's a cantilevered walkway, this is going down to the causeway, and a guardrail on that side there. That's the causeway, and I think either up or down on that, Amy, there's actually the, look, a cross-section of the bridge as well, I think. Yep, that's perfect, right there. Same idea here, you'd have a 24-foot across, there'd be some type of elevated crosswalk, and guardrails there, there'd actually be some type of guardrail between the crosswalk and the roadway, and then some type of guardrail fence or something to prevent, you know, to actually define the limits of that walkway from where it overlooks the pond. That's basically about all I'm going to talk about with those areas right there. I've been told the selectmen actually are going to hold a meeting on this, and I believe it's going to be a joint meeting in January, that they'll talk about this with the design engineers and go over that, since it is a Town of Norfolk project, and they're overseeing the, the, the design of it and moving forward with it, that in compliance with the MassWorks grant. The other part of the improvements, if we could go back to, actually, that 2.2 appendix, Amy, that'd be awesome. Thank you. The other part of the improvements, actually, is sort of this pinkish section right from here, and basically, where the work on the MassWorks grant stops, we pick up through this area. And you can't see it, but that's approximately where Brett Farm's Road, if you can, if you can scan that up, perfect. Yep, that's approximately Brett's Farm Road is right there. And basically, what we're looking at is, in this area here, reconstruction of, and widening of Lawrence Street. Most of Lawrence Street's already 24-foot in width, and if it isn't, then we're going to widen out to 24-foot in width with reconstruction and repaving. Water main installation is actually going to, going to go from where the MassWorks grant stops, all the way up to Brett's Farm Road. We're actually going to put in gate valves and extensions to Brett's Farm Road, Eagle Drive, Cranberry Meadow, so that those streets would actually be all set and ready for water mains someday, if and so they do need that with things. Also, along Lawrence Street, what we actually do when we bring a water main up like this, the houses along Lawrence Street will actually provide water services to the property line of those lots, too. So, if any one of those actually wanted to tie into town water someday, they could hook up to it, and they wouldn't have that expense of actually having to go through the road, tap the water main, or anything else. So, that's a benefit to some of the people on Lawrence Street if they ever choose to take advantage of it there. This improvement process here, from that point to this point, is actually all part of a development agreement that's, that's still being worked out with the selectmen in the Town of Norfolk with that, and ourselves. Obviously, there'll be some tweaks to it and everything, but that's overall what, what the goal of that development agreement is, and what the goal of what is going to happen in Lawrence Street. Basically, from Brett's Farm Road all the way to the MassWorks, where that ends. So, when we're done with this, and MassWorks is done, Lawrence Street would basically be a 24-foot width. That's what we're proposing from Park Street up to Brett's Farm Road. So, moving along here, talking about phasing and how we're working this project. If we could pan that down a little bit, Amy? Thank you. Perfect, that's, actually, maybe up just a tad. Thank you. In an effort to actually, what we're trying to do is, is phase this project, you have phase one, phase two, phase three, four, and five here, is actually, by breaking down this, this property into smaller phases, you know, reducing the amount of open area. And by doing that, that helps to minimize erosion, stormwater concerns, things that make a site very hard to manage with this. It reduces the potential for dust, it leaves more vegetation and tree cover for buffers in the other phases, when we're in phase one here, for instance, and we're working in this area. This is still all vegetated, tree-covered with everything, and we're able to do that the way this phasing plan has been designed with this. And then also, it also gives us a chance to start to re-vegetate these areas with lawns and houses and trees and plantings before we go into another phase. So, this phase is becoming re-vegetated, actually, as we start into another phase. So, what happens is, overall, that it reduces the amount of stormwater runoff, dust, and actually makes the site a lot more manageable, a lot more attractive. I don't think anyone, even in this room, would want to come to a, would want to come to a site looking for a house or something where it's just 50 acres of open land with that. looking for a house or something where it's just 50 acres of open land with that, never mind the environmental concerns that that raises. So phase one, in this area right here, is the green, okay? That's approximately 14.7 acres. There's about 3,000 feet of road and 33 units of housing that would go in here. Once again, we try to make a continuous loop all the way around and out for public safety concerns with that. Phase two is actually this area here, the sort of pinkish-purplish area. That's 11.6 acres, approximately 1,500 feet of roadway, 19 units of ownership housing, and 28 units of rental housing, which would actually be on this side in here. So that's phase two. Phase three is 8.7 acres of development, 1,200 feet of roadway, and 17 units of homeownership. That's the brownish color right in here like this, okay? Phase four is 13.7 acres of development, which is this yellowish area right up into here, okay? That's approximately 2,500 feet of roadway and 44 units of ownership housing. And then the final phase, this light blue color in here, which is 12 and a half acres of the site, 2,000 linear feet of road, and 35 units of ownership housing with that. Staying on this plan here with things, just like to talk about, you know, preparation, planning, how we go forth to actually construct a project like this. First of all, I know everyone's concerned as hours of operation. Hours of operation for onsite construction would be seven in the morning to six in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, and seven to four on Saturday. Generally, most of the work crews are out much before that time, but if they're trying to finish something, we just want that flexibility. Actually, the town bylaws actually allow you to go from seven to seven, Monday through Friday, actually Monday through Saturday, I believe. So this is actually more restrictive than what the town bylaws allow you to do with that. Hours for off-site earth removal trucking, okay? We're actually limiting that from 8:30 to 2:15, Monday through Friday. No Saturdays, no holidays, obviously no Sundays with that, with the off-site trucking or earth removal from the site at all with that. Now, how do we get construction people? How do we manage a site? Where do we set up? How do we move forward? Right now, in this area right here, specifically right in this here, we have the existing entrance to Buckley Man. It's paved. It was prior use, actually, when they did the demolition and the removal and cleanup of the site. This was a construction entrance that was used. And we'd like to use that same entrance. What that does is actually, basically eliminates impacts for all the houses up and down Lawrence Street in here from truck traffic or anything else. Gives us a direct route, maybe about 1,000 feet from that entrance to Park Street, that we can have direct access to going out through there, okay? As we start to set up and initialize with that, that would be the dedicated construction entrance for earth removal. We'd have a construction office there. In this area here, we'd have stabilization pad for trucks leaving the site, clean tires and things. We'd have a paved accessway going out to Lawrence Street, so make sure tires and trucks, tires are clean. We'd also have a waiting area right in here, so that there's no vehicles ever on Lawrence Street or Park Street that are parked out there. There's plenty of room in this area. Anyone who's been out there realizes that in this area here, there's a larger foundation. Most of this land is already open, exposed. Makes a great place for a staging area. So we'd actually utilize some of these concrete pad foundations for staging and setup with that if we have to bring materials in, whether it be pipe or aggregate for constructing and installing infrastructure through that. And basically, that's where our truck traffic would go from 8:30 to 2:15. We established those hours. I actually had a discussion with Homes Transportation, and they told me that the bus routes and things are approximately 8:15-ish, you know, 8:20, and they're usually out of there by 8:30-ish in that timeframe. So that's why we established that morning start time, which is about an hour and a half later than we would usually start. And then the school gets out about 2:00, 2:15. So that's when the last truck would be leaving the site through there. Part of this as well is that we would limit ourselves in the earth removal activity to 60 truckloads a day, which is 120 trips with that. That's a maximum amount that we'd take out of there at any one day on things. So that, while we don't believe we would achieve that each and every day, we wanted to base that on that. And then, because we know we're gonna have days with this bad weather that we may not be able to haul, or we only get 30 loads out of there a day. So when we look at our numbers and everything, it's based on a 45 truckload or 90 trip per day average, but it's 60 truckloads would be the maximum, so that we get to that average of 45 on that. Part of this as well is that there'd only be two entities that would be allowed to haul from the site, so we could manage truck traffic appropriately with that. One would be S.M. LaRusso &amp; Sons, and the other would be Thomas W. DePlacido Corp. on that. Be the only two entities that would be able to haul out of there. That way there, there's no independent trucking coming in. We can control the trucking. It's all under direct management, and you don't have somebody driving in there saying, "Can I buy a load of gravel and material?" or something like that. The other thing, too, is that Tetra Tech came up with a great idea of actually providing some type of placard on the trucks, probably on their tailgate. We're in agreement with this, that, you know, would actually define, might say, it might be like a red triangle or something that says AB SML 12, S.M. LaRusso Truck 12. So if anything ever happened, people had a complaint, we would know which truck it is, it could be called in, and those trucks could be identified on that. So we also have that worked out as well with things, so that people could report any concerns. Our office has a 24-hour voicemail that does contact directly to our cellphones if there's ever a problem or anything with that. Also, one of the luxuries of this site, actually, is that because we have the staging area in here, we're able to actually bring back material if needed. If stone or certain materials are needed for laying pipe on that, when we have a truck leave, we can haul it back with that, actually. So therefore, overall, reducing some of the truck trips, because we're hauling both ways if we have to to bring material in on that if need be. Also, if you look down in this area here and these other areas out in here, okay? What we'd be doing, this here is actually a temporary stockpile for phases one, two, and three, storage area for loom onsite. So any of the loom that's taken up from this area would be stockpiled onsite and screened, so we could put it back. Would not be hauled offsite to be processed and hauled back or anything else with that. So that would be for phases one, two, and three, as we go through this development here. And then, any of the stumps that are removed also, people always think that stumps are something that, you know, a stump dump or anything else, it's dreadful and things. We actually look at that, that's a valuable asset to keep on the site. We grind them up, we use them. It's a very thick, stringy compost. We let it sit for a few years. We can use it, mix it in with the loom. It also makes a great stormwater management tool for erosion, or actually a blanket or matting to cover over some areas that might be open and help reduce dust. And it actually generates heat in the winter that we use it as a frost blanket sometimes. So it's a tool we like to use and keep right onsite. Once again, that would reduce truck trips and loads from the site to remove stumps as well. So we'd be utilizing that. As we do go into phase three here, and we start to develop this, we'd actually have to move that loom pile out into this area here and that. So that's what, so as this is developed, move out there, and this is phase five. And that's how we sort of manage some of the stockpiles that are onsite and the earth and products that we would keep there. Any other products that we can screen or utilize onsite that are naturally occurring, we would, so that we reduce the need for any import with that and reduce the, you know, the potential for export as well. So we'd utilize those materials onsite. So what does all this mean and look like from a timeframe and expect, you know, and a timeline? How's this all come together with that? If we could go to, I think it's Appendix 2.4, Amy? If possibly, yeah. If I could be blown up a little bit, it'd be awesome. Maybe a little bit more. That's, yeah, that's good for right now on things, definitely. So what we're looking at here is, across the top, we have year one, year two, year three, a little over in four, five, and six, and then seven and eight, down below that, as we work our way through it. Each phase, initial setup, site clearing, strip and stockpile materials on site. We have earth removal, site infrastructure, and unit construction. We went through and actually prepared a whole timeline and sequencing of how everything comes together here and phasing with this. So if we're on phase one, which is this area right here, year one, as you can see, that initial setup and stuff would take a couple of weeks to bring a trailer in, create the construction entrance and things with that. We're looking at a month to a month and a half of site clearing. There'd be a little bit of overlap as we set up. And then you're looking at stripping and stockpiling anywhere from a month and a half to two months. There's some, a little bit of overlap as actually we start to move and get that site cleared. There'll be a little bit of overlap into each section. We would start with earth removal approximately on the third or fourth month, and that would go for 12 months in that phase one. As we get a couple of months into it, we'd actually have three months of infrastructure where we're building roads and actually putting, you know, the pipe, the drainage in, and starting to set up for houses with that. Once we get one, two, three, four months into it, we'd actually be able to start unit construction. There is an overlap here between earth removal hauling out and unit construction with that. And we're actually able to look at each phase when we did this and how the cuts and fills and look at the site and how we would establish that. And it's very doable with that, based on looking at some of the heat maps and stuff that were put together with things. So what happens is, we haul for 12 months, and then there's a stop. You get a couple of months stop, and then we start again into phase two when we get into year two. And this cycle repeats itself based on the size of the phase and things. We get a couple of months, then we end up hauling again for another 12 months with that. And then there's a much greater time lag between when this stops and when the next phase starts up with earth removal. I believe it's about eight months comes through, and we actually get down here into phase three, and the cycle repeats itself again. Now, notice in the blue, we're building houses, hauling material out. If we could pan that up, Amy, a little bit. Perfect. And then just maybe go, just move this over a little? Perfect. We'd still be doing unit construction. We'd be starting, in phase two, we'd be starting phase three, cycle repeating itself again. Phase three doesn't have as much earth removal, earth work and site leveling, so we'd be looking at about six months with that, and then 18 months of construction. Once again, in phase three, as that stops, we get about an eight-month lag. So it's not continuous trucking through this, through the whole project. There are lag periods when we stop, we're building houses, before we go to the next phase with that. Starting year five, we're actually into phase four. This is actually one of the larger phases with earth removal and earth work. That would take about 18 months. If we could pan that over a little bit on that, Amy? Perfect. That 18 months, that all stops on year six. That's the last phase that requires earth removal and that significant amount of earth work with it and things. So that stops after the 18 months there, and then we start with unit construction through the rest of phase four. And then if we could go down and pan back over to year seven. Now we have still unit construction in phase four that brings us to the eighth month in year seven. And actually, phase five, once again, site clearing, stripping, site leveling, and then site infrastructure. Phase five is one of the smaller phases with that. There's no, notice this is just site leveling, not earth removal. Phase five has no earth removal out of it. So as we get into the last phase, all that heavy site work would be done in phase four. So it's really phases one, two, and three that would have the truck traffic with it, and we try to keep that away with that construction entrance and not coming out through the main entrance of the neighborhood with that as well. So your earth work and things are done in phase four for off-site removal. Phase five finishes up, and basically, we've got a little over year 14 months of housing construction going into year eight with that. So that's how a timeline all comes together with everything on that. Basically, we did receive some comments today from Beta and Tetra Tech and things, and I had a chance to review those. They were good comments. They complimented the Construction and Operation Management Plan. And I have no issues incorporating all those comments into our Construction Operations and Management Plan with that as well. So that's basically an overview of how we put it all together. It was 23 pages. There's a lot more information in there, but I really don't think anybody wants to hear it all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sean, did you want to make some comments? Thank you.
Again, everybody, my name's Sean Riordan. I'm the ZBA's review consultant principally for the earth removal operations and some of the construction management aspects. So as Tom and the others mentioned, we've been working pretty diligently with Mike, with Tom, and with other members of the group to try and, number one, get on a common page as to how these numbers are generated. So if you recall, first meeting, Tom and I had a pretty heavy difference of opinion on, you know, truck volumes and trip traffic and things like that. Tom and I worked pretty closely and worked through all those metrics. So all the numbers that you see presented tonight are numbers generated by methodology that we agree with. So our first order of business was to validate everything that's being said to make sure that it's represented accurately. In regards to that, one of the aspects that we had coming out of the last meeting was there was a revision to the grading plan. We needed to review those numbers and validate the numbers that were represented at that meeting. So at present, we validated those numbers. We're no longer at a million and a half yards of excavation, off-site export. We're in the order of 900,000 cubic yards still. Beyond that, what we wanted to do is also give a little bit of context to some of the discussion about kind of where we sit relative to that 900,000. At that current number, it represents about 70% of the site is a cut and about 30% of the site is a fill. From our standpoint, that's a balance that's within range of a reasonable range. Doesn't mean it can't get less, it can't trend more to 50/50, but it's within a range of what's reasonable. The original proposal was something like 90/10, which to us skewed to the side of just unreasonable. The other thing we did is we talked, Mike and I talked to the DPW. DPW's preference when constructing new subdivision roadways is to as much as possible, put those new roadways and utilities in cut sections, so you're not dealing with some of the issues that we talked about last month. Beyond that, we took a hard look at what Tom has represented in the construction management plan. From our perspective, it's not always the what, it's the how. So when you're moving a lot of material, it's not so much how much you're moving, it's how you're moving it. And if you do it in a measured, well-thought, responsible way, you end up having very few problems regardless of how much that you're managing. So in this case, we worked hard with Tom and with Mike and with the other members of the groups to try and figure out, okay, you know, what are the key aspects to managing principally the earth removal operations? Number one for us was always the causeway. We viewed that as an unsafe point where two trucks couldn't pass safely. So Tom was great in working with the town to get a solution to that problem. The scheduling on that solution, that problem should be constructed, or the repairs should be constructed by the end of next year. What that means is that before any earth removal operation happens, those improvements will be in place. And Tom has represented to us in a meeting. We'll have to make sure it gets memorialized in the decision that no earth removal will take place until those improvements are complete. The other critical thing that Tom mentioned was, we were very sensitive coming out... The other critical thing that Tom mentioned was, we were very sensitive coming out of some of the comments that we heard last time about the school kids and when they get home from school, so we asked Tom to go check with the busing company and make sure that we scheduled our truck traffic for the export removal to the hours where the kids are in school. Or, you know, not the typical, you know, trucking hours and not the typical busing hours. And also, what's nice about that is it keeps those trucks off the road during the traditional commuting hours. So they're, they're not on the road when you're coming home from work, and they're not on the road when you're leaving for work. The other thing that we thought was a good idea was the construction entrance, utilizing that entrance closest to Park Street, which is going to be the principal means of egress for all the truck traffic. And then one of the other things that we want to make sure gets, happens is that there's a way of verifying what's being done. So what we've asked Tom to do is any material that leaves the site needs to end up somewhere, and we need to know where that ends up, and we need a slip generated for each of those loads, which tells you how much was in it, where it went, and when it went, and who was the driver. So that way, we can cross-reference anything that we get reported out of the people in the town with a particular driver, so that if there's a problem, we can remedy it. So in general, we were fairly pleased with the level of detail and the level of commitment in the Construction Management Plan. It's critical that it not only gets written, it gets executed. So what we've also recommended is that we implement a periodic compliance review between the fire chief and the police chief and the neighborhood if possible, to make sure things are progressing the way they're supposed to. So what we want to do is lay out a plan and then hold the developer from the very beginning to that plan, so that everything gets done exactly the way it's represented.
Thank you, Sean.
Sure. Sean, one of the things that we discussed was validating the feasibility of the 120 trips. It's 60 loads, but it's 120 trips, because it's 60 loads of fill coming off, not fill, 60 loads of earth coming off the site, so it's actually 60 round trips, right?
Correct. And sometimes, so let's keep that logic, but there is some benefit that the truck leaving is full, it's going to a yard that has gravel and material. They're going to need stone, they're going to need loom, they're going to need other material during the course of construction. The idea is that those trucks will not return empty. If they can take a load back, then that will reduce a whole cycle of trips for us.
Okay, and you looked, did you look at the feasibility of these trips in context for their schedule? In other words, they have the schedule, right, of X number of months for each phase of earth removal, but now they're limiting the number of trips. So do you think, given the quantities involved for each phase, that they can actually do, keep to the 60 loads per day, including within that short window that they have, it's from 8:30 to 2:15?
Yeah, so the bars that you saw on Tom's chart, which represented the duration of export trucking, jibes perfectly with his 45 loads per day number. So he used 45 loads per day to generate those bars. So we checked the length of those bars against the volumes coming out in each phase, and they match up perfectly. So from our standpoint, we like to see two things when we see a schedule like this. We like to see a reasonable estimate as the basis for the bar, and we like to see fluff between the bars, so that when stress happens, we have a release. Doesn't mean when stress happens, we gotta push 120 loads during a day, it means we just gotta spread that bar out a bit, so we can maintain a reasonable rhythm for how stuff gets removed from the site.
Okay.
I have a question. I noticed, sorry.
Sean, I noticed in your letter today, as it relates to trucking routes, you said that the agreed defer removal into improvements to Lauren Street causeway section have been completed, and suggests appropriate measures should the reconstruction of Lauren Street be delayed. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, so the best-laid plans, right? The current plan is for the roadway improvements to be done this coming year. It's not rare for projects like this to hit a snag and take two, three, four years. So I think we need to have a clear expectation that in the event something like that happens, we need to reconvene a group of stakeholders, whether it's the police chief and the fire chief, to make sure that any deviation from the expectation that those improvements are done gets properly reviewed. Because that's always going to be my most critical concern, is how you get heavy vehicle traffic across that causeway given its current condition. So, you know, in our meeting the other day, we fleshed through a bunch of different scenarios, and I think in a 95% level of certainty, provided everything happens within a reasonable timeframe, shouldn't be a problem. But if we find that something happens with the causeway improvements, that they're kicked out to 2020, then we need to revisit the issue and make sure that we have an appropriate course of action. So that's what I'm speaking to, that in the event that that gets delayed, we need to have some specific reviewable means of addressing that traffic.
Sean, one of the issues that you raised was the width of the causeway. They've, they're now proposing, or the town is proposing, to widen it to a 20-foot paved surface with two feet of shoulder on each side. Does that address your concern about the width and the ability for two trucks to pass each other?
It does, and it would be 24 feet of paved width, just where you'd have a strike edge line two feet and off the edge. So you would have, you would still have 24 feet of paved width.
So the shoulder is the same grade as the?
It is.
Travel surface?
Yeah. And the key component there is there's a separate protected pedestrian capability, which is, you know, trucks, if they hit each other, big deal, right? They'll survive. The problem is if some, if there's a kid on a bike nearby and the trucks are worried about each other, they're not worried about the kid. This gives them a dedicated path for both, less bikes, but for pedestrians, but gives people an option with their bike, they can walk it on the sidewalk.
Does the construction plan talk about the direction of travel on Park Street?
It does, but I know Tom had some specific thoughts on that.
Amy, I think it's 2.1, Appendix 2.1? So actually, one of the preparations and things that we would go through before we start, you know, off-site trucking and things, is actually prepping the roadways adjacent and around to the project. And actually, there's some sheets here. This has all been reviewed before and submitted as part of the traffic plans and management for the site. What you're looking at here is Park, Park Street and Main Street. There's some clearing that has to be done here and over in this area, all within the right-of-way, just for better visibility, if there's any traffic going those ways there. If we could scroll down a little bit, Amy? That's on the side, it's a little bit tough, but I don't know if you can rotate it, but if you can't, not a big deal. Okay, great. So actually, there'd be some clearing, this is the construction entrance that's coming here, the existing Buckley and Mann driveway. There is signage that's located around the area also with that. And if we could scroll up just a little bit, oh, back down, just. Oh, no, the other way, yep, I'm sorry, that's good right there. Also, another detail of Park and Main, where we have some clearing on both radiuses there, and then there's some signage and things as well here. I believe that's a flashing sign as well, that just warns people coming up through that way, that's permanent. But these mitigations would be done before we started with any type of truck traffic off-site with that for earth removal. And if we can go to the last one, scroll down a little bit. If we can rotate that? Okay, that's good there. This is the site here, and as we come out, this shows traffic going both ways on Park Street towards Rentham and actually towards Main Street with this. Shows traffic going out to 140, and then actually going down Main Street in that area with things. These are all signage and points where signs are going. It's tough to see with this, but there's actually signage all the way down the roadways, where the construction entrances are, truck traffic direction and everything is part of the traffic management plan. But basically, Park Street would be the main egress of the earth removal vehicles going that way, trying to get to a main road as quick as possible with that. And that's basically what we're proposing for the truck management as it exports from the site. Yes?
So as I look at that, you're, at this point, not proposing any traffic, making a left-hand turn as you're coming down Park Street onto Main Street, am I correct?
That's correct, going basically towards Franklin, you mean, and things, that's correct. We'd go out to 140 and then catch it that way, and then go to 495 if that's where we're going. So this site here, we're not proposing any earth removal traffic at all.
And Tom, based on your earth removal end sites, that being, I assume, the LaRusso site in Rentham and your own site that you have, okay? Can you give us an idea of the percentage of truck traffic that would be moving through the center of Norfolk versus coming straight out to 140?
Basically, we proposed that it would be a 50/50 split. So if there was 120 trips per day that's in and out, you would basically have 60 trips that go this way and 60 that go that way. Some of these may branch out before they get to Norfolk Center, maybe there's something that's going to another way. But it looks like leaning towards more of the trips would probably be heading towards 140, but for basic purposes in this, we kept it at 50/50.
And I know that Bob from DPW has been very concerned about, around the big roundabout in the center of town and the work that we've done with cobblestones, replacing that crummy brick stuff that the state put in. Have you talked to him at all about the impact of the trucks with their weight on that, and is he comfortable with that?
We've talked locally in this area here with things, about truck impacts on roads and things, and actually, once the causeway's rebuilt and things. But he's told me in discussions that there's probably hundreds of trucks a day that go through the center of Norfolk and things now with that, and, you know, basically, that's a main thoroughfare, 115 going out to 109, and connecting Route 1A, Route 1, is connected by 115 and actually to 109. So he recognized there's truck vehicles there. He didn't bring that up as a concern to me.
Thanks for discussing this. The traffic on Main Street, though, going towards Norfolk Center, is 115's the goal for that traffic?
The ultimate goal, actually, for most of this material, is actually, SM LaRusso has a facility in Walpole that they would process it at. That would be one location, and then another location would be in Rentham down in this area as well. So it's basically Rentham and Walpole where those would be going.
Right, so I'm thinking that you're using Main Street, 115, you're going all the way out Main Street past the prisons, maybe?
I'm sorry, could you?
You're using Main Street all the way out towards Walpole, right? Or you're using 115 up towards Millis?
It would probably go Main Street out to Route 1A, is probably how it would happen. So Main Street by the prison, and then to the intersection of 1A.
Not midway branch, not midway?
No, not on those side streets. Our goal is to stay on numbered routes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sorry, Dan. One quick point. So I think we're speaking to kind of one of my concerns, where I recommended a placard or some visual identifier for these trucks. So if we find them in places they shouldn't be, readily identifiable, and people can call out that they're not doing what they're supposed to do, and you have a way of remedying it. So that's, I'd really like to see, it's great that we're limiting the number of haulers and that we're not going to have a bunch of, you know, private trucking companies, but I still would like to see some sort of placard that identifies as these as Abbeyville Export Material Trucks.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to add a few other comments about what we've been discussing on the hydrology issue. Just as an update, the applicant filed a hydrology study that was undertaken by his hydrologist, Stephen Smith, that was filed with the state DEP last week, I believe, and it was copied to the zoning board, so we have a copy of that report. That report has been sent to Neil Price at Horsley Witten. Neil has been engaged to review that report and to provide advice to the zoning board as to any hydrology impacts from the wastewater treatment plants on any sensitive receptors, either on the project site or abutting wells. The primary focus of that is to give the board feedback as to whether there's any concerns raised by this wastewater treatment plant. Overall, we expect that this is going to be an environmentally friendly solution. It's a lot better than private septic systems because it treats the effluent to a much higher degree. But there still is potential concerns with nitrogen impacts from the plant, and we are also concerned about the direction of flow of the groundwater on the site and ensuring that the groundwater, excuse me, the wastewater from this plant will not interfere at all with the soil contamination that is in place on the site in the so-called AUL area. AUL is an acronym for Activity and Use Limitation, and that's the roughly four or five acres, if I'm correct, area that has been delineated by the state as basically no-touch. That's an area that has existing soil contamination from the prior use of the property. So part of Neil's review is to give us some advice as to whether we should be concerned at all about the wastewater treatment plant's flows interfering at all with, or conflicting with, that AUL site and causing any new problems. He will also give us advice on any potential impacts of this wastewater plant with wells on abutting properties. So I think one of the things, one of the action items for us tonight is to pick a hearing date that gives him enough time to review this report and provide the board with his own peer-review report on those issues. Going back to the, on the AUL issue in the audit letter that came from the state, we have asked the applicant to provide a letter from a licensed site professional, which is the technical term for an engineer who specializes and is licensed in environmental cleanups. And this, we're asking the applicant to provide a letter explaining what, how the applicant is going to respond to this audit letter, so that the board and the town can have some comfort knowing that this is going to be addressed in the correct way, and also, so we understand whether there's going to be any concerns, you know, with these issues and the potential redevelopment of the site. I'm sorry? The scope? Okay. So that addresses the AUL issue, we've talked about the hydrology issue, we talked about stormwater tonight. So I think it would be an appropriate time to take comments from the public on the Construction Management Plan issues.
To Dan's point, we're going to dedicate the entire meeting to hydrology and the report from Horsley Witten, as well as landscaping and architecture, so I believe that our... So, I believe that our, January 3rd is at our next scheduled meeting. Do you think Horsley-Witten will be ready by then?
I doubt it. So, we might have a meeting to discuss, you know, the additional information we get from the applicant between now and then, but I expect he's going to need more time, given the holidays, probably mid-January, late-January.
Okay. So, we'll clearly post that when the hydrology peer review will be completed. Hopefully, the 3rd, if not, most likely, the 17th of January. Okay. If you have questions or comments, we'd like to focus on the construction management plan. That was the main topic tonight. So, if you have questions or comments concerning the construction management plan, please come up, let's use this microphone tonight, I think that one works better, and identify yourself. And do you want them to spell their last name? If you could spell your last name, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Name and address. Dave Buckley, B-U-C-K-L-E-Y, came in the way Franklin. Just a quick question. I appreciate the applicant's work that put into trying to figure out ways of ruining the truck traffic, but my question would be, has there been any sort of alternatives analysis performed in regards to the grading to see if there really is a necessity for the level of export that has been proposed currently? The 900,000 yards, well, significantly less than 1.5 million. A minor grade change to the proposed project of perhaps only six inches would eliminate the need for any export off the site, would create what would call be a balanced condition whereby the site would not require any export. So, just a quick question, if that's been looked at, really vetting out real need for any export off the site at all? Because a development of this nature, most developers would typically look to balance a site of this nature to eliminate really any need for exporting materials or importing. That's my question.
Yes, so, I mean, that's been the focus of our work. We're trying to, from the very early on, initially establish what can be done and how much it takes to get what percentage done. So, how we figured it was, it's about a five-foot difference would result in about a half-a-million-yard change. So, the site, we did an initial analysis that if you raise the entire site five feet from where it was originally proposed, it would result in about a half-a-million yards reduced export. A 10-foot raise would be about a million yards. So, we ended up, they took that information, came back, and then ended up at the roughly 900,000 yards. Beyond that, we did what's called a heat map, which shows areas of fill versus area of cuts. What we're trying to do is avoid excessive areas of fill and avoid areas where you've got more than eight to 10 feet of fill. So, we tried to do that and tried to balance that out in terms of arriving at a reasonable number. The challenge you have in this site, you've got very, very big grade changes over a very, very small distance. So, it means you have to move a lot of material to balance the site. The only way to balance this site would be to open the entire site up and move material from one stage to another. So, what we'd do is it would preclude the more measured phased approach that Tom described because you would literally have to open up every phase in order to move material from one phase to another. So, we tried to balance as much as we could the concerns at both ends. The issue you've got is, is a wide range of what's achievable and a range of issues that feed into what the right solution is. We can't determine what the right solution is. All we can do is determine whether what's proposed is within a range of what we would consider reasonable outcomes. The original proposal, we didn't consider reasonable. We came back and said, "At a minimum, we'll be looking for you to raise the site three or four feet." They came back, raised the site in very different areas, netted out to be about the equivalent of raising the site five feet or 500,000 yards of reduction.
Sean, can you elaborate a little bit on the concern with constructing roads and fill and how that would, you know, how much fill we're talking in terms of, if we were to balance the site, how much fill there would be under these roads, what the concern is with that, and whether, to what extent we might see a lot more retaining walls if we try to incorporate more of a balanced site?
Yeah, so, retaining walls are a bit different. That's a mechanism for grading. My biggest concern with regard to cuts and fills is that traditionally, when you construct things that you don't want to sink, house foundations, roadways, gravity utilities, ideally, those things get constructed in cuts so that you're dealing with material that's naturally compressed over time, has settled out. Ideally, you want to avoid fill sections where you're having to take material, fluff it up, so when you excavate material, it becomes loose. So, when you put it back, you need to compact it and make sure it's compacted well in order to make sure that you don't have settlement in the future. So, that's why we try to avoid putting house foundations, roadways, and things like that in fill sections, particularly in fill sections that are over 10 feet. So, what happens when you have a shallow fill section, like, say, four feet, five feet, that lens will get compacted over time. When you start having 10 to 20-foot fill sections, what happens is, is you'll get bridging. So, you'll compact maybe the top four, five feet, but the stuff underneath that will stay uncompacted until two, three years later. It manifests itself by road sink, catch basin sink, utility sink. So, you'll see, every once in a while, you'll see like an electric manhole where, you know, the whole thing sunk on the ground, right? And there's a big hole. That's because what happened is the materials underneath that weren't compacted properly and that settled out after construction. So, what we're trying to do is balance those concerns with the concerns that the neighbors have about the export. Our biggest takeaway from this is we're less concerned about the volume than we are about the mechanics of the removal. So, it's the way they remove the material, whether it's a year of trailers or eight years of trailers. I'd rather have eight years well-managed than even three days of poorly managed export. So, we try to focus more on how are you going to manage this material because there's going to be some coming and going than on the volumes. And we have to leave it up to the applicants to figure out kind of what the right balance is.
Lawrence Wilson, Lawrence Street, or 22 Lawrence Street. If you could do me a favor and bring up the graphic of the housing area showing the different phases?
The phase?
Yeah. Not the graph, the housing, that's it. I'm a, just noticed something at the end of this. The intersection of Lawrence Street to Park looks like a tube at the end of that now that's opened up. Have we gotten rid of the island with associated parking area for people that visit the pond? Am I actually looking at something that, and has that all been paved over so we facilitate the trucks extracting the material?
Yes, actually, when these plans were colored in, they were just colored in to the limits of the right-of-way and the property lines. So, the answer to your question is that parking area and things would not be disturbed. That's just the limit of the right-of-way and what the town owns is what we colored in.
And, just one other comment. The last time I hear, we're talking about taking out 90 million yards. We're still there. And Sean was talking about 400 to 600 trucks a day. Now, we're taking out the same amount. We're at 120 trucks a day. I just find that a large difference.
So, when I use those numbers, the 400 to 800, in a traditional unconstrained excavation operation, you could expect a massive activity in the very early phases of a project. So, if left to their own devices, I would expect a contractor to go in there with 100 trucks with a lot of heavy equipment to move as much material out as they can at once because the real money is in the construction of the homes and the selling of the homes. The faster you get through the more costly exercises of earth removal that doesn't pay dividends, the faster you get into home construction. So, our concern is we need controls in place to make sure that that is a more measured removal operation. So, that's what we have in the construction management plan. By him putting limits on 60 loads per day, that's a set number that he's got to work with. We've validated the numbers that they actually work, given the time that he has. So, what we're trying to do is avoid these really, really big peak exercises that would be typical of a normal heavy excavation like this.
What number is hit, do you stop extraction?
The 60 loads a day, we would not ever exceed that. One of the other issues that came up and stuff that I think resulted in the 400 to 600 or whatever trips per day, when that was mentioned last meeting, is that also, when you have a site like this, a lot of times, a big fill job comes up five miles away or something, and they need 100,000 yards of fill, and 50 trucks are put on to satisfy that job. That's not our intention here and things. And we're not in the gravel business, we're in the home building business. And we actually just wanted to contract with a company that processes the material, holler directly to their site, let them process it. It's their problem, and we can do that in a very steady, managed fashion and not deal with, you know, we have to move or export a tremendous amount of material off at one time.
How are you? Jeff Bartlett, 19 Berkshire Street, Norfolk. I probably live, I would say, less than a quarter of a mile from where Tom will be building this site. I don't know Tom well. I mean, we used to coach football against each other and I almost beat him, but anyway. This is going to be built someday, right? This whole area will be built and developed someday. For those of you who've been here for 20 years, we beat the golf course thing, right? And luckily, with the rounds and the play down in golf courses and the water that takes, that's a good thing. I can only speak for somebody who's a community guy, who built a Pop Warner field in Rentham when those fields were tremendously poor. And again, we beat them. And, you know, he donates to the boosters. I have a son that's on the KP football team. They won Super Bowls back-to-back. We have to raise 30 grand. Tom has always been somebody that is straight up and will do the right thing for the community. And not to say that, you know, he's employed several KP grads within his company and the people that he deals with. So, you know, we can have the big cookie cutter guys come in, and I don't like it either, but we can have a guy who's interested in the community and wants to help the community and always has. So, I, you know, I don't live on Lawrence Street, and I know that's, it's probably a big issue for you guys. But, no, I'm selling mine, you can buy it. But, and that's a, that's great because, you know, people are here for the right thing, the wrong thing, and just to comment. I'm just here to give my opinion, okay? Before I moved to Berkshire Street, I'm sure there were people that were against that development as well. Before people moved to Brett's Farm, I'm sure people were against that as well, right? Now, you're in, and what, we forget about what we battled to? I don't know. We're hypocrites or we're not? Thanks.
Again, if you have comments or questions about the construction management project, that's the topic we're trying to focus on this evening. Thank you.
Just a quick question or a follow-up, some of the things that were said. So, construction management plan-wise, so, I think one of the comments was the, one of the desires of the cut-and-fill analysis or review quasi the alternative was not wanting to open up the site. But just looking at this plan right there, the primary stockpile location of the lump of the site is in Phase 3. So, realistically, you're going to have to come in there, cut all the trees in Phase 2 and 3, a good portion of it, strip the lump, get a stable site for a truck to maneuver or a dows that are maneuvering the soil over that big stockpile area. So, you're going to be opening up a big portion of Phase 2 and 3 just to use that as a stockpile location. That's just my first comment question. On the issue of settling, certainly, it's not all that in common practice in the development world to use a 10-ton vibratory roller, compact and one-foot lifts, and structurally pad a site to make it suitable for building. So, that really should not be an obstacle for really further pushing the design of the development, pushing the engineers, if you will, to see what they can do to get the amount of export even further down. I seem to think that that can still be a reasonable goal, given that fact that they've already made some pretty good progress thus far from dropping from 1.5 million to 900,000, you know, to the point that was just made, I'm sure this community is going to be fantastic once it's built. It's going to get developed. Every big piece of land in the state is going to get developed. But I think doing it in a correct fashion or really pushing the developer to do better is, I think, to the point of most of the folks in the audience here today, and that's the point I'd make.
So, as far as pushing the developer to do better, there's room there. The question is how to do that. So, and what do you give up in exchange? I will disagree with you. You can't balance a site without opening the entire site. I don't think all of those, the entire site needs to be open for each of the phases. I think you can do all the work within each phase. But the bottom line is, the more material you have to process on-site, the entire site becomes open for excavation. So, without question, in order to balance this site, the entire site from edge to edge will be open. So, as far as where that right number is, I can't say. There is no right number from my perspective. It's about a resolution between the parties.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Mike Judice, Eagle Drive. I just have a couple of comments and questions on the management plan. But first off, just on the number of units, this issue was raised several meetings ago. As you know, this application was originally submitted with 196 units. At one point, it was increased to 216, and now, I guess, it's at 204. As I'm sure the board is aware, just based on the housing stock, the number of housing units in town, any 40B development that had over 200 units proposed could have been denied at the time of application within the first 15 days, I believe. So, I just would like just a comment or clarification on that in terms of the number of units. This just seems like a way to, you know, anyone could come in and on their initial application, submit a number and then increase the number of units to over the limit that the town would potentially have safe harbor from. Just wondering if you could comment on that.
So, you know, the answer to that question, Mr. Chair, is that the board could exercise its right under the regulations to determine that this project exceeds the cap for the town of Norfolk with being 200 units. The board, my understanding is that the board elected not to do that because it was weighing the benefits of having the additional units and weighing the risks of those additional units. And so, that was an option the board could have exercised, but at 204, you're four units over, and it's, I don't think it was something that the board was concerned with in terms of invoking that, but...
I think in terms of the characterization of the project, it's actually two projects. There are two separate filings made for parcels that were adjacent to one another, and there is no, there was no large project issue triggered here. These are two separate projects. We discussed this with Mass Housing way at the very beginning, and so, the board didn't have that right to exercise, in my opinion.
Pretty convenient.
So, just a couple of comments and inconsistencies in a few places in the construction management plan. On page 3 and section 1.3, there's reference on the second and third lines to 52 acres of the site being disturbed. But if you scroll forward to pages 5 and 6, when it gives a breakdown of the actual acreage of each of the phases, if you add up those areas of disturbance for each of the phases, it actually adds up to 61.2. the phases, it actually adds up to sixty-one point two acres as opposed to fifty-two acres. So I'm just wondering what the correct number is.
We show sixty point seven acres in our analysis, yeah.
It's correct. It's a little over sixty acres that will be disturbed in the development of the site. Fifty-two acres is actually for the housing and the lots and where the rental units would be. The remaining acres is open space and common areas.
Thank you. Moving on, section two point one, on page five, there's a reference to a pre-construction meeting and notification of a butters. It talks about notifying immediate butters on Lawrence Street, it's within seven days of the start of construction. Just for the board, the suggestion or request would be, I would think it would certainly be reasonable to notify more than just the immediate butters on Lawrence Street. I think people on Park Street are probably going to be more inconvenienced by certainly the truck traffic than anyone else, and that notification should extend beyond the immediate butters on Lawrence Street. And that's the second bullet on section two point one. And seven days to me isn't sufficient notice. It should be, for a project this size, it should be more notice given to people that live in the area.
Mike, what are the additional streets you recommended?
Certainly at least Park Street. I mean, that's where all the truck traffic is going, if not Park and Main. That would just be my suggestion, something to consider. On page six, under section two point three point two, related to off-site gravel removal, hours of operation. And I may be nitpicking here, and this may be semantics, but I would like some clarification. It says, "Any truck traffic that is specifically related to earth removal from the premises will be limited to exiting the site between the hours of eight-thirty AM and two-fifteen PM, Monday through Friday." When I read that, it specifically says exiting, to me that implies that potentially trucks could be entering the site before eight-thirty in the morning, just like some clarification on that. And secondly, it's specific to trucks related to earth removal. Certainly, as we've talked about before, there are going to be a lot of other large vehicles entering and exiting the site. I would think that the hours, the restricted hours should apply to those vehicles as well.
Actually, on section two point three two, on that, that is correct, and I thank you for bringing that up. I was thinking the end of the day, basically, trucks had to exit and be out by two-fifteen. But yeah, yes, we don't have a problem with, they can't enter the site before eight-thirty in the morning as well. I was thinking at the end of the day, when we were thinking about that, to make sure that the trucks were all exited from the, from the project before school buses started coming. So we could add that to that, that's not a problem with things. And that, this is also the, this is specifically for the earth removal trucks, contractors and delivery vans and other types of construction vehicles would follow the other hours of operation, which are from seven to six, which is still less than what the town of Norfolk requires under their bylaws.
I would just ask the board to reconsider that in terms of applying those limited hours to other vehicles. Certainly, personal vehicles, getting workers to and from wouldn't be an issue, but in terms of large trucks, deliveries and whatnot. And then there is a little, if you look up above on two-three-one, it talks about hours from seven AM to six PM. I know the applicant has stated that it would be five PM, and it does say five PM on a couple of other pages further into the document, so there's a little inconsistency there. And just to follow up on what a previous resident had commented on in terms of disturbing other portions of the site, the stockpile areas in Phases Three and Four, as well as the leaching area down in Phase Two, it talks about that area being stripped in Phase One as well. So certainly more than just Phase One would be disturbed during site clearing for Phase One. And then just to, again, put in context, the truck trips that we're talking about, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but the average of forty-five loads or ninety trips a day, again, is one trip every four minutes. And if you add up the duration of each of the earth removal activities for each of the five phases, it totals four years. So we're talking about, on average, you know, a truck every four minutes coming and going from the site for a period of four years that the people have to live through, and that to me is unreasonable. The maximum is sixty a day, one hundred and twenty trips is one trip, one trip every three minutes. And then on page sixteen, a little concern here, and this is a little bit different than what was talked about earlier. The fourth paragraph talks about the work on the bridge on the causeway. And I heard two different things. Initially, it was stated that no truck traffic would be allowed to leave the site until that work was done. Then that was sort of hedged in terms of if there would happen to be a delay on the work that was done on the bridge and the causeway. One of the issues, so what it says here is that if for some reason the bridge and causeway work gets delayed, they would look at other means to mitigate the traffic impacts, and one would be one-way traffic, signalized traffic along the causeway. One of the issues with that, however, is the bridge, as we've talked about since day one. That's a hundred and five-year-old bridge, and I believe Mr. McGee, the DPW director, testified that he would be concerned with having, in this case, eighty thousand tractor-trailer trucks going over that hundred-year-old bridge over the course of seven or eight years. So I don't see how this project could be allowed to go forward. And, you know, keeping it to one-way traffic would alleviate the width of the causeway issue, but not the structural integrity of the bridge, which is clearly in question and has been from day one. And then lastly, what has been talked about tonight is there was an estimate here, and I'd be interested in hearing if Sean agreed with this estimate of, this is on page seventeen, section three point one point four, the estimate of one hundred and thirteen to one hundred and forty-four trips a day for workers and other vehicles that would be supporting the construction of this development over the course of the project. So when you add on that higher end, one hundred and forty-four trips a day to the ninety a day on average for earth removal, you're up over two hundred and thirty-some odd trips a day. And that's, you know, one vehicle every minute and a half over the course of this eight-year project. So just want to put some context on that, and maybe ask if Sean has had a chance to take a look at that number and see if that's realistic. Thank you.
To answer Mike's question, yes, we did look at that number, but unfortunately, there's no metric you can apply to generate those numbers. It's, it's just made up. So based on, I mean, really, it is, it's based on, because if you, if you, it depends on how many houses you're building, it depends on how many, who's doing what at what time. So it's really just, what I would consider an educated person's best estimate, giving you some metrics for how it is represented, so that you can compare it to actual activities. So I don't think in any way you could come by and say there's going to be one hundred and forty-four trips. It could be two hundred and forty one day, it could be sixty one day. There's just no metric available for coming up with those specific numbers.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify, because maybe people are confusing? You're talking about total trips of all types of construction vehicles, plumbers, electricians, et cetera. Is that what you're commenting on?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, would you clarify that for the...
Right, so these do not speak to the export volume trips. These are just traditional workers coming to site, sheet rockers, framers, you know, so, you know, I could have at my house, doing an addition, I could have twenty people at my house in one day. So, so these numbers are just Tom's, in fairness to Tom, they're an educated representation of an expectation. If you find they're drastically different, then there's a reckoning that needs to happen. But I think they're, they're an adequate representation, I think, is an educated representation of what to expect.
I just would like to explain to the board, and it's a very valid question with things that was brought up here, is having been in the house building business for over twenty-five years, we do have, I would say, very accurate counts of what a house generates and things for trips per day as it goes through different phases of construction. Essentially, historically, we look at a development like this to generate about twenty-nine units per year delivery, and to do that, you're basically starting a unit about every eight days. So you'd have about ten units under construction at every given time. We actually did do a timeline based on having all those ten units going at one time, from site work to putting a foundation, to finish work, to framing, roofing, prepared a timeline with that, and came up with those numbers of one thirteen to one forty-four, based on ten units of construction being developed at one time with that. And that's what you would need to generate the twenty-nine units per year, which falls into how we based our timeline with that. Now granted, everything can change on economic conditions, there could be less than that, but that's generally where we like to stay, is about twenty-nine to thirty units per year per project when we're developing it. The other thing too is that we've actually have traffic counts of developments where we have people living in the development and actually construction going on at the same time, able to count the houses that are under construction, the houses that are occupied, excuse me, occupied, and actually come up with numbers on that. And ironically, when we actually did this, we're very pleased that it actually matched up to those numbers very well on things, when we actually had trip counts, houses under construction, and actually what we came up with our timeline for construction with that as well. So yes, it is an educated guess, but I feel as though we have enough historical data and actual facts from trip counts in projects that are under construction to feel very confident about those numbers.
Margaret Cahaly, Cranberry Meadow Road. And my first comment, I apologize for beating a dead horse on this one, but I know tonight we were presented with a new house count and the bedroom count. He spoke very quickly, but I believe the number of bedrooms has gone up, and that should affect the traffic study that has been done. I know they mentioned we were one car off from meeting a traffic light on Park Street on the finalized plan, but I think we're probably there now with the extra bedrooms that were added. My next comment, I believe they had mentioned that they'd be adding a sidewalk from the causeway to Lawrence Street, I mean, from, along Lawrence Street, from the causeway to the Franklin Town Line, and I heard no mention of a sidewalk in his presentation this evening, as far as redoing the Lawrence Street section. And my third comment was that, living on Cranberry Meadow, the entrance to the construction site, we're basically establishing a new road, a temporary roadway there, and I just feel the entrance is too close to Cranberry Meadow based on town guidelines. I've never measured it, the distance, but usually you can't have streets that close together creating the intersection without it being a hazardous situation. Thank you.
To address some of those questions for the board with that, like I had stated, the total for-sale houses, the number of units has actually gone back to the original submitted proposal of one hundred and forty-eight. Those bedroom counts and everything match the original proposal. The apartment actually did go up by eight, but we're down to two oh four. Overall, the number of units in the development's gone down from the two sixteen to the two oh four, that were based on those traffic counts that had the numbers so close with that. As far as a sidewalk on Lawrence Street, the development agreement is under discussion with that. I know the planning board and the selectmen are aware of putting a sidewalk on Lawrence Street. There's some other developers that are involved in that area, and some of those obligations may fall on some other parties.
Jason, can we ask you to, you don't necessarily need to do this tonight, but if you could look at the question that was raised about whether or not we need to revisit the trip generation?
So that's exactly what I was just looking up right now. So based on their traffic studies, what they had taken a look at was the, the number of townhouse apartments were forty-eight, and the single-family homes were one hundred and forty-eight. Now, when we're generating traffic as traffic engineers, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. It does not look at the number of bedrooms, it looks at the number of units for a single-family homes. So that you could have an apartment or condominium, and it could have two bedrooms, one bedroom, three bedrooms, it doesn't matter, it's the unit itself that is within the database, within the ITE trip generation information.
So your, so your review of the study was based upon the initial two oh four?
That is correct.
And which is now where we are today at two oh four?
That is correct.
All right, so your opinion is that we do not need to revisit or relook at the traffic study?
That is correct. Have we actually eliminated the discussion about the traffic light on Park Street? Because we were talking about that before. Right, so for the traffic study, the traffic signal at Park and Main, the information that was provided showed that it was one vehicle short under their full build-out condition of meeting the traffic signal warrants for eight hours of the day. And that's generally what we use to be able to determine if a traffic signal should be implemented or not. At the last meeting, what I had recommended was that a monitoring study, that the developer conduct a monitoring study to take a look at the traffic volumes at that intersection to find out if in fact a traffic signal would be warranted or not after full build-out. The reason why it's kind of, you know, I think that a monitoring study would be required was because, number one, you know, we're just one car short, you know, coming up Park Street. Number two, there's a lot of adjustment factors that come into play when you're developing a traffic study. Number one, it's when the traffic counts are conducted, then you have to adjust those traffic counts to an average month condition. That's in Massachusetts guidelines. Number two, then you have to account for background developments that are planned in the area. Well, what if those estimates are kind of off, you know, if they're higher or they're lower? You also include a historical growth rate to project the future conditions, and then it's a matter of, okay, well, what about this development? What if the distribution of the site trips changes a little bit? So that maybe it's going to be, it's going to trigger the traffic signal warrant in the future, maybe it's not. So all these factors come into play when we're estimating future traffic volumes. So that's why I think that a monitoring study should be conducted.
Mike, we haven't decided that there would be no traffic control with that intersection. We need to discuss that for...
Right, yes, okay. Thank you.
I think the other thing we have to look at as well, there's another development that we, I don't think your traffic study has taken into consideration, is it Cranberry, what's the other development? Cranberry Heights, did your traffic study take in those additional trips as well?
So I believe that that development came in after this application?
Now, I know it's not the purview of this board, but that's something we probably need to discuss with the selectmen and the planning department. That is definitely going to affect the traffic on that road.
Yeah, because if that development adds one more car, are they really the ones that are responsible for, you know, putting in a brand-new traffic signal? Or is it almost like a fair share contribution that could be handled, but some kind of a funding mechanism would need to be established first, and then the developers could contribute to that.
All right, yeah, we're going to have to look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Mike Judas, Eagle Drive. Just for clarification for the board, I'm ninety-nine percent certain that the original traffic study that Green did was based on one hundred and ninety-six units, which was originally submitted, not two hundred and four, so there are eight additional apartment units as the applicant indicated tonight, over and above what was studied in the traffic study by Green. And just for information purposes, the Cranberry Heights subdivision is twenty-two units. And just for information purposes, the Cranberry Heights subdivision is 22 units.
Can we get clarification from the developers' traffic engineer? What's, how many units did you use in your study?
I was hoping not to get up tonight. Bill Scully with Green International. So the original study was the 196, which was on the original application. Through the review process and, actually, I think the state had indicated a desire to increase the number for, to reach a certain density for the town to get the Mass Works grant. So that went to, I believe, 216. And our response to comments and working back and forth with Jason during this review process, then we analyzed what 216 would mean in terms of traffic impact. And now it's down to 204. So we haven't done an updated trip generation number. Bottom line is, you're in the ballpark of whether it's 196 or 204, it's roughly the same amount of traffic. But anyways, over the recent past, it's gone down to that 204. So we're just sort of waiting until it's a 204, then we can do whatever clarification or updates that the board wants or Jason and I have to work through some numbers. Okay?
Karen McCabe, Lawrence Street. First, thank you for the presentation. Most of my questions were answered during the presentation, but I still, I did not see anything in the construction management plan about blasting. And we've brought up that there were some areas that may need to be blasted. So I would think that would need to be covered in a construction management plan. And within that, and I don't know what is contained in blasting material, what type of blasting's being done and what type of runoff or anything from that blasting material? And even air quality from that blasting material and water quality and the groundwater impacts. Because I'm on Lawrence Street, I have a well, I'm very pleased with my well. And I'm very concerned about my well. And I'm concerned about my foundation, I'm concerned about many things from my house. And I don't see any of those in this management plan, which concerns me that they're not being told for certain reasons, I'm not sure why. So in the last meeting, I did request that the developer puts up a cash bond for us, it butters and it butters to a butters for us and our wells and possibly even our foundations with this many trucks and the blasting that I assume will have to occur due to the rocks that are back there. And so that's one of my points for it. The other is in Phase One, which this isn't the best for someone who's colorblind, is the green area and the staging area for all the trucks and stuff are where there's three or four houses. And it says that in Phase One, the amount of houses that's going to be in Phase One includes those houses that are under that, I can't tell what color that is, maybe brown, staging area. But it was nicely explained that that will be used for all five phases, even washing the truck tires and everything, which was a concern of mine. And if this house is being built there, how can that have, you know, trucks being washed and staged so they're not sitting on Lawrence Street? I don't know.
Once again, thank you for the comment on the blasting. That was not in the construction management plan with that, that was our mistake on things. We don't expect any blasting out there. Actually, the place where there's outcroppings of ledge that were out there, we're actually filling around them. It's, there's no blasting or cutting where there was outcroppings or ledge. And we still don't expect to have any. However, we will develop a management plan if any blasting was required to be in compliance with Town and Norfolk regulations and State of Massachusetts regulations as well. As far as up front, the staging area on the plan, that's right in here. That construction entrance, so the green, some of this is actually going to be open space in other areas and actually a wastewater treatment plant up in some of this area as well. This is actually Phase One construction, stock storage, as we go through that first year and things. This still would be maintained as the construction entrance and there still would be a sentiment entryway in here and we would still have a staging area and things in here for vehicles. However, stockpile of pipe, stone, other materials that we may need to bring into it, we don't want to be driving past all these houses that people are living in to get that, to bring it further up into the site. So as we do go further into the site, we will have other staging areas that are under construction closer to where the actual work is happening. So yes, for the first year and a half or so that we're here in Phase One, that will be, and then we'll actually move it up in this area. But this will be the main entrance for that heavy construction vehicles and for the five phases. Even if it means we don't build a house there until that area is completed.
But all the construction trucks exiting will exit through the construction area and be cleaned down and go by all those new houses you just built?
The way we're looking at this and things is just to go over how we saw the interior looked at site traffic and things. This is for heavy construction vehicles and off-site exit of earth removal. It may not be for a contractor's pickup truck, for a plumber or something like that. That would actually, they'd be using this route here. But if we look at, and we follow this up, this actually handles Phase One, even Phase Two, if we're coming from this area. It's the minimal amount of houses coming out this way that we would actually impact coming through here. And it's the minimal amount of houses that would be affected on Lawrence Street as well by using this exit. So we did try to respect the neighborhood in this area and not actually use this entrance or that entrance for the heavy construction vehicles.
Thank you. I also, I also had a question on the, there was no mention of the additional acreage, because I don't know the numbers of the acreage that's also could be included in this and it's not. What is happening with the additional acreage and who is responsible? And especially on the AUL land?
At this point in time, the additional acreage would be maintained and owned and controlled by a homeowners association with that. The option is, if the town wants to take it, they could, but we're happy to keep it under homeowners association.
So in the last meeting, it was mentioned that duplexes were eliminated? And I actually saw in the plan here that they were brought back in, that they were, the Abbeyville, what, Commons area, which is the rental properties, are duplexes or are they not duplexes?
Yes, I can see how there'd be a little confusion there. The Abbeyville Commons is the rental proportion of the site. The for-sale units would all be single-family. At one point in time, they were all up in this area and up in here. What's happened is we've made the lots larger and gone to actually freestanding single-family homes. This area here, where you're talking about Abbeyville Commons, that is the rental area up in this area and that would be composed of duplexes, actually two units put together, and those would be for rental.
And then for the 40, would it be easy to determine which, and I'm for 40B done appropriately? So would it be obvious that which one is a low-income house versus which one is not? As it's, I've driven through your Eagle Drive and Rent Them and I am able to tell by the amount of acreage for a lot of land. So they should, if there's so many lots at certain acreage, I would think that 40Bs should get equal, you know, not just the smaller lots with the smaller driveways, they should get equal opportunity.
The location of the affordable homes that are required under mass housing, we actually have to put together a plan submitted to mass housing and they have to be interspersed throughout the whole development. They can't be right next together, they can't be on the smallest lots. They can't, they have to be interspersed and they have to be basically indistinguishable from any other house in the neighborhood.
Are the lots in Eagle Brook, are the affordable lots smaller than the Marquardt lots?
No, no, they, there's some affordable homes that are on larger lots, some that are on smaller lots, they all vary. Basically, we just tried to split them up every fifth or sixth lot so they're all dispersed amongst the development.
Can I ask a question about, with regards to blasting, is the AUL, is the actual AUL itself sealed and if so, how?
I'm not an LSP, but I'll do my best to answer that. There is a cap on it that, so there's three feet of a sandy type of buffer material to protect that cap, and then there's a cap, you know, underneath that sandy fill to actually protect that from any rainwater or anything else that would actually infiltrate down and go through it. So I hope that answers your question, because that's about all I can tell you about it with things.
Okay.
But I can also tell you there's no work anywhere near that and actually there's no blasting or anything else that we come up with any of our borings or anything else that would be necessitated in that area as well.
I know you don't foresee the potential for blasting, but if there is blasting, my concern is that blasting may cause the AUL to, the AUL protection, if you will, to fail. And I wonder how that could be addressed if an LSP could address that.
That's a viable question, actually, we'll look into that.
Sandra Myatt, Eric Road. I had a couple of questions, one on this map here. Let's see. So if you're starting construction and say there is no water on the site, how do you do dust mitigation?
In other projects we've done, we actually have a tanker truck that comes in, it can water it down, it's filled in at another location. And in some instances, we've actually even put in point wells and filled up trucks ourselves and things like that to service it. So it could come from a variety of ways, off-site or from a point well that's put on-site.
And I had another question about the sidewalk. So you do a sidewalk on the part of the Causeway and how do kids get across where the construction entrance is? As most of them live up here, how do they cross the street or the construction entrance at the end of the sidewalk?
It would be designed and situated just like the intersection of any street with that. The sidewalk would come, terminate, come down, and then go back up again and towards Elliot Boulevard, the entrance, the first entrance to Abbeyville. So it would be just like any other street with that. And, you know, that's another reason we limited most of the heavy truck vehicles and everything. And that's why we limited the earth removal from 8:30 to 2:15 so that children are not walking down through there.
So on the construction management plan or the comments to it from Tetra Tech, they said that on page two, page two, item two, that the eight-year timeline for full build-out with the largest earth removal occurring in the final phase, but I think somebody else said there was no earth removal in the final phase. So is there earth removal in the final phase or not?
Phase five, actually, no, there isn't, there's site work, but that's a fill that's actually in Phase five. So a lot of the material from Phase four, which does have the most earth movement activity, would be used to fill in some sections or kept on-site for Phase five when we do start that. So there is no earth movement in, earth off-site from Phase five.
All right, and so the processing of materials on the site means that this becomes sort of like a commercial operation? I'm a little concerned with how much processing is going to be done and what kind of machinery and what kind of noise is going to be generated?
Basically, we have our own screening plant for screening loom on-site. It makes no more noise than a loader or anything like that. And it's actually, the other choice is actually hauling the material off-site to process it and then hauling it back in, which actually would generate more truck trips. So this is really a more efficient, environmentally friendly way to do this is actually have a place screening on-site, the loom or if there's material that's suitable for construction on-site, whether it be sand or some other type of product that we can screen and use on-site. We're going to take advantage of that because all that reduces truck trips and is environmentally friendly.
Tom, you're going to be crushing any stone, is there going to be any rock-crushing plant or anything like that?
There's no crushing on the site. We don't own a crushing plant or anything, just a screening plant. So, and actually, the material that we found out there, there's just no, there's very little stone in it and things, it's very small.
But while you screen the loom, aren't you screening out stones?
Yeah, screening out stones and roots mostly with that.
So what happens to the stones after you screen them out?
It becomes used as a fill, you know, in different areas where we may need fill.
So you don't crush them?
No, because the problem with, when you have loom and you go to screen that and you have wood in it like roots, it's very, very difficult to remove the roots from the stone. And what happens is that contaminates the stone, so you can't use it like to bed pipe or septic system or underneath the foundation or anything like that. So, you know, areas where we may have open, where there's no houses, no roads, there's no anything like that, that's a good material for fill because it's, you know, the stone and it's, usually there's a little bit of loom residue left in and some roots with it.
Thank you. Name is Ron Ober, I'm on Main Street, 69 Main Street. I appreciate the presentation that Tom gave tonight and the gentleman that followed sometime later who told all the good that Tom does, but I'm not here to talk about that, okay? I'm here to make a simple request, Tom, that you tweak the root of the trucks and I'm going to make a suggestion on that, okay? On Main Street in Norfolk, from the prison to the bridge on Norfolk, on Main Street. There are 80 houses. We went through this before with 106 and 108 Main. And there's 80. And those houses, including my own, have a tough time as it is getting out of your driveway onto Main Street. Doable, but we do it. My request is, as the trucks are coming down Main Street after they make the right-hand turn from Park, okay? Come to the Rotary, instead of continuing on Main Street, have the trucks take a right. Instead of continuing on Main Street, have the trucks take a right because you did say that you'd like to get them out to a numbered route as quick as you can. Don't blame you. I would too, growing up in the trucking business, that's important, you know? But anyhow, as you come to the beginning of 115 where the rotary is there, on the other side, the Town and Norfolk already has a sign that says Truck Route. Take a look at that sometime. It's right opposite the clock on the far side of the rotary. And I think that's for Union Street, you know? But if you could tweak that a little, please give that some consideration. That's 115, it'll take you right out to 1A and head to wherever you're going in Walpole at the pit. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
I had one more question. I had one more question. It was from the last meeting and I'm not sure who brought it up, but it was about air quality meters put amongst the neighborhood. I do actually appreciate the spraying of the trucks, of the wheels and stuff that may mitigate some of it, but that's proof. There's going to be plenty of dust and there's going to be now even some fil, I don't even know, to get the rocks and the other. The dust is very, could be very dangerous and anyone that lives around that area, dust travels, it's pretty windy. I'm not a wind person, but I watch which way my, against this building sign on my lawn blows and it blows right at my house. And that means right towards me and all the neighbors on this side of the development, so going towards Lawrence Street would get the dust and dirt from all of this excavation and never mind, I don't know, as they're driving through. If there could be air quality meters set up, I'm not really sure where the best places would be so that we as residents of Norfolk are protected for our health.
Yes, you are correct. It was brought up in the last meeting. We have started to do some research and look into that. There are state and local laws that require the control of dust, you know, during construction and demolition. So we are doing some research and looking at what we can and can't do. And so we've definitely taken that, taking note of that and we'll address that.
Hi, my name's John Godin. It's G-O-D-I-N, no H in my first name, 34 Lawrence Street. Just as part of that, as you're looking into it, if you can make sure that if there are dust monitors or air quality monitors put up, that public has access to it at any given time so that, you know, if it's posted to a website or something that we can get some access to just so we are aware and so it's not like 10 years later that we're finding out that the air quality was really bad so we can monitor it ourselves as well. That'd be great. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Oh, I think we have one more. Sure, come on down.
Hi, I'm Gary Searle. I live at 245 Warren Drive. It's the Fox Run Development, just about a mile away from there. Just had a few questions on the stormwater management system. I noticed there were three basins and first question would be, is the topography such that all the water runs off from the three different areas that were outlined into those three basins? And are there conditions where those basins overflow perhaps with a 100-year storm? My knowledge of, my limited knowledge of the stormwater state requirements is that, sorry, cough, you can't have more water leave the site after development than would normally run off prior to the development. So I'm assuming the basins catch everything and we've probably covered 50% of the land with roads and houses and driveways. So you're channeling the water into basins. Do those basins overflow and is it controlled flow? And where does it go when it flows over?
Rick, you had it pretty easy tonight. Can I answer that?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. Yes, all the flow is directed to the basins. The basins are basically designed to provide infiltration of the stormwater into the ground. There is no discharge out of the basin through an overflow or any other means except for infiltration to any other areas. And the basins do have emergency overflows in the event that there's a storm event exceeding 100 years.
So it's only under 100-year conditions that they will overflow?
Above 100-year conditions, correct. Can I answer all your questions?
It does, please.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Diamond, 3 Brett's Farm Road. And I just had a couple of questions. The big pile or staging area there for the Loeman dirt, I think comes in early on, but I was just curious about how long that might be there and is the screening equipment in there? The reason is my house is about 350 feet from there and I got a pool. I like to hang around the pool and I'm just curious how long it's be there and what kind of equipment would be operated in there. And I appreciate the noise section in the construction management plan because there was a note in there about the backup, the beep, beep, beep when the big trucks back up and it said that they could be controlled or ambient controlled. So it'd be good to know about that, I think, for all of us. And then with the trucks, probably coming from Rentham down or I don't know which way it's going, but I was just curious, you see signs that say no Jake Brake or engine brakes and I didn't know if that would be considered as, something would be posted or considered as part of it. So it's really three things there.
Great questions with that. The, that stockpile area right in here, I probably should have made the footprint a little bit smaller with that, but I just, right in that area now, the grade of the land is pretty flat and things and that's why we chose that area. This here would still be vegetated and you've got a couple of houses that are there now and stuff, so we would try to keep that vegetated and things to create some buffer there. But to answer your question, the stockpile would come and go. So basically, as we remove material loom from here, bring it over here, we'd screen it. As the houses were built and we need a landscape, we'd be hauling it back. So the pile would be, would increase then decrease over a period of the first three phases. We could actually look at moving that out here quicker and away from the houses on Lawrence Street as well as once we start Phase Three, we're going to want to move that out back in this area too. So the idea is that it would probably be there for the first two phases, but we'll look at our construction management plan and try to expedite that to get that back out here as soon as we can. Just so you're aware, this is actually where the open pit area is and things out in there. So that was a nice natural site to actually have stockpiles and stuff. But we'll look at trying to move that out there. One of the nice things about this entrance right here and exit for the gravel and earth removal trucks is that it is sort of flat. The trucks will be coming slower than going off to Lawrence Street, but we're not opposed to having a no Jake Brake sign on that or anything. That could be done with that. I think, was there one more question?
Just the backup, the beep, 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 you know, when the big load comes out.
Yep.
Do you have to have that on?
It is a state law and it's OSHA that we have to have it on. I've read that and know that there are some things that you can mitigate the sound a little bit with that, so maybe it's not as loud. So we can look at that and things in that was the management plan.
Well, I think you get to sell the house if people have a little bit of plans.
One other quick, can you use the mic?
There's just one other thing is there's a little stub road there and it goes into that town land owned by Norfolk to the left, yeah? And I just didn't know why that's there or if there's plans for that to be there. It's more of a curiosity. I could ask the town, but I was curious because you're putting the road in.
We're actually not proposing to put the road in there, but we're actually proposing to leave a piece of property there so that the town could have access to it later on if they ever wanted to. So there's not necessarily a road there, but there's access there should they want to access the back portion of their property for some reason.
Okay. Gee. Seeing no other questions? I think that covers everything tonight. Our objective at the next meeting on the third will be to hopefully cover hydrology, if not the 17th. But I believe the other two topics will be architecture and landscaping. Will you folks be prepared?
I reached out to my architect today just to see how he was doing with the plans and everything and that coordinates with the landscape plan. He would have architectural, and I'm pretty confident would have landscape plans ready for like January 2nd, January 3rd to submit and present at the next meeting. And I felt like we could present it, but there would obviously be some follow-up which could continue into, I think you said January 17th? So that might be a continuation of that because you'd only be seeing it for the first time that January 3rd, just because of the holidays and things. So I just wanted to run that by the board if that's adequate, that we can make those presentations January 3rd and then follow up with it on the 17th with questions and things.
Mike, is there anything? Mike had a question. Yeah, that's good, Tom.
Excuse me, just a quick question. So it appears as though they submitted plans for the Causeway and the bridge maybe today or yesterday. Could that also be on the agenda for January 3rd to review those plans and have them peer reviewed and that presented?
Isn't it a town?
I don't think they supplied plans. Are you talking about the sketches that were on the PowerPoint?
No, we did not supply plans. The Town and Norfolk had discussions about a week or two ago with the engineer and then I was asked to show what was happening on those plans tonight. But I believe the selectmen in the beginning of January are going to have a meeting and discuss those plans and things.
Is it on the Causeway?
Oh, yes. It'll be on the development plan.
Currently, we think that the selectman meeting on January 9, 2018, they'll be discussing the development plan, which will include Lawrence Street, the sidewalks and the Causeway and the bridge. So stay tuned for further developments on that, but right now I think it's scheduled for the 9th of January, 2018. For the selectman meeting, yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for the preserve at Abbeyville and Abbeyville Commons till January 3rd at 8:00 PM here at the King Philip Middle School to discuss landscape design, architecture and potentially discuss the hydrogeographic evaluation reports.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Just one thing, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, a great new year and I know this, you know, thank everybody for coming out because we are close to Christmas, New Year's, Hanukkah and everything else, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman?